Good morning, and we'll call to order the meeting of the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Your agenda is in order and ready for your approval.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two is to receive the general manager's report. We do have a few recognitions and we'll have a presentation. To start off, we would like to recognize and thank a Veolia driver, Aaron Flores. Last Saturday, Aaron helped locate two missing boys, brothers in fact, ensuring their safe return home. During his evening route on a Deuce vehicle, Aaron was alerted by a customer that two young children who had boarded the vehicle were needing to get to a location to be joined by a family member. While that location happened to also be on a stop along Aaron's route, he noticed the family member was not at the stop to join the boys. He ensured the boys did not exit the vehicle, called the Bus Operations Control Center, and continued to the South Strip Transfer Terminal, at which point Metro was notified and the two brothers were safely taken home. Aaron effectively employed Veolia and the RTC's procedures for missing and lost children, and more importantly, as a community, we are especially grateful to him for ensuring the continued safety of those two young boys. Aaron, if you could, please stand and be recognized. All right, now it's kind of hard for me to even share this news. I'd love to keep this super quiet because I feel like if the city of Henderson sees this, they're going to put a big target on this person's back and try and steal him from us. I've got my eye on you. So, but I have to share with you that Jerry was recently recognized nationally, and they only choose one person a year for this award, but he was recognized this week by the National Public Employer Labor Relations Association. They awarded him with the 2013 Award of Excellence, so if we could give him a round of applause, They selected Jerry based on his commitment to fostering a culture at the RTC where employees feel valued and for his ability to develop collaborative relationships with unions, leading to successful negotiations and grievances being resolved. Again, only one award like this is presented each year nationally, and we are honored that Jerry was selected, and we fully believe you deserve this, Jerry. You helped create the culture of collaboration at the RTC, and for that, I think we are all very thankful, so. What'd you say?
As if Henderson's great.
Deborah, I've got my eye on you, too.
Tina, on the employee manual in Chapter Three, it talks about loyalty.
Okay.
Maybe highlight that, and send it over. Jerry, congratulations.
Jerry, take, yeah, go ahead and highlight that, will you?
Congratulations.
A few more recognitions. The RTC website has received a few awards. As you know, we launched our new website with the internet to keep it fresh, relevant, and user-friendly, and just after launching the new website, we began to see increased interaction by end-users, as well as received positive feedback from the community on our ease of use of the new site, as well as how adaptable and optimized it is to handheld devices such as smartphones. Just recently, the RTC received national recognition during this year's Service Industry Advertising Awards, the SIAA. The RTC was named the gold winner in the categories of website, homepage, and website redesign. And at the same time, the Association of Marketing and Communication Professionals also awarded the RTC as an international 2013 Platinum winner for the website, as well as part of its annual AVA Awards. Those AVA Awards recognize digital work by creative professionals, ranging from audio and video production to developing websites that present interactive components. And I would like to take this moment, there are a few people on staff that really deserve the recognition for that. If I could have Jody Gutstein and Jesse Diaz, as well as any representatives from Brain Trust. And one more award we want to talk about, and that is that we were one of the very, very few BRT systems in the United States that was recently awarded, the Bronze Award by the, it's a long one, Institute for Transportation and Development Policies Bus Rapid Transit Standards. Yeah, I know, that's long. Basically, what it means is that we are, we're in the bronze category. There were only, I think there were, how many bronzes did we have? Well, there was only one silver winner, that went to Cleveland, and I think there were four B, uh, no, I should not, there were four national systems that got the bronze award. There were no gold awards in the United States. The gold awards went mostly in Latin America and in China, so. Curitiba, yep, Brazil, yep, there were ones, but still. Very big deal for us even to make it to the bronze level. Next, I would like to ask Margaret Dwyer, the Business Manager for Transit Demand Management Services with URS, who is our consultant that manages our ClubRide commuter services program, to come up and give you an overview of the program.
Great, thank you so much. Just going to do a quick test, make sure I can control this. So, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you this morning. Again, my name is Margaret Dwyer. I'm with URS Corporation, your contractor for the management of the ClubRide program. I have been with URS for the last 11 years, and I've been in the transportation business for 18, sort of surprising. I have been the Business Manager for the TDM practice within URS for that duration, and I've been an advisor on the ClubRide program since we've had this program contract. I have served as a project manager of many other comprehensive and similarly structured commuter assistance programs around the country, including those in Boston, Atlanta, Charlotte, North Carolina, Florida, and so on. URS, as an international consulting firm, does a wide range of transportation services and contracting, but we are the largest provider of transportation demand management services in the country. And our focus is really on implementation of these services, which is kind of where the rubber meets the road, pulling those cars off it. So I want to start by telling you a little bit about ClubRide, for those of you that might not be as familiar with this important RTC program. ClubRide is a free service to employers and commuters throughout Clark County. We are a program that's also known as an employer trip reduction program, an ETR, which means that our goal is really to work with businesses, an employer-driven program, to help to shift trips away from drive-alone commuting. We're a grant-funded program through Federal Highway Administration and NDOT, so we, in meeting the provisions of our grant, are focused specifically on ways to mitigate traffic congestion and improve air quality in the process. We do that by helping people find alternatives and use alternatives to driving alone. Things like carpooling, vanpooling, taking transit, of course, biking and walking to work, even riding a motorcycle to and from work, to help to improve the air quality in our region. We're customer-driven, we kind of take a sales approach to the work that we do, and our customers, as we see it, are employers and commuters. So we work with employers first because they have a significant opportunity to influence the way people commute. We work with commuters because, of course, they're the people that decide every day how they're going to get to and from work. The benefits that accrue to businesses that work with ClubRide are things like improved employee retention and recruitment, improved employee morale, especially in tough economic times. The business, the benefits that accrue to commuters are things like lower costs to get to work, which is really important for a lot of people, a less stressful commute, a little improved quality of life, and so forth. Some of the programs that ClubRide offers, and we are a diverse program, we offer employer-based services, and that's really the lion's share of what we do. We have a very energetic outreach team that reaches proactively to the business community to secure their participation in ways to make it easier for people to get to work. We try to make participation in ClubRide as easy and as seamless as possible. We provide them with a wide range of tools and marketing materials. We're onsite at those workplaces throughout Clark County. We do things like free ride matching for people. I'll tell you, in a lot of, a lot of work sites here and around the country, the things we hear from people are, "Oh, I can't carpool because no one lives near me, no one works my hours, and no one works where I work," which we kind of think, "Well, hmm, that's funny, we have a lot of traffic congestion." So we know that by working at the destination where so many people are traveling, we can have a greater impact and get greater efficiencies out of the program. So we do things like offer commuters a discount on the Easy Rider Monthly Pass, and that's available to businesses that are partnered with ClubRide. We also, as I mentioned, have free ride matching to help people find that carpool partner that lives and works near them. And we offer what we call commuter insurance. It's the Guaranteed Ride Home Program that takes a little of the fear or anxiety out of giving up your car. Some people are apprehensive because they think, "Well, what if I get stranded, or I have a sick child, how am I going to get home in the middle of the day?" So this program gives them a reimbursable taxi ride, transit, they can even get a rental car, or have a colleague drive them home and be reimbursed for their mileage. We do a number of networking events for our partners, and one of the things that we're going to be doing at our May event is restructuring some of our partner levels. I've seen on the awards, bronze, silver, gold, and so on, and that's how we structure our relationships with businesses at ClubRide. We have bronze, silver, gold, and platinum partners, and one of the things we're doing in May is giving businesses an incentive to add employee reporting to some of their, to some of their participation. Fortunately, our employees at ClubRide Partners have a really good incentive to report their commute to RTC and ClubRide. What that does is give us data on the miles that we're pulling off the road and the emissions we're pulling out of the air. This is a slide on our ClubRide Rewards Program. This is probably the most popular ClubRide service because it gives people a financial incentive to tell us how they get to work. We have four different ways that people can report their commute to ClubRide. They can call us up and speak to a representative, they can go online, they can email it in or text, but in fall, we launched our new touchscreen kiosk method of reporting, and it's been tremendous. We rolled it out as a pilot, and we've seen huge increases in the percentage of commuters reporting their commute to us, and that's, you know, that's a really key metric for RTC and a priority for data capture. One of the things that we did in researching the kiosk program was we surveyed our TCs, that's our Transportation Coordinator at each of our partner sites, and we asked them what type of program improvements would make it more attractive to offer ClubRide. And one of the things we got back was a Spanish interface would be useful, especially for many of the big properties, and so our kiosk, it's really nice, easy touchscreen, it's bilingual for Spanish and English users, and it also is icon-driven, which makes it really easy for people to understand what we're, what we're doing to ask them to report their Another of the incentives that's available through ClubRide for anyone that shows their membership card is a discount through our merchant discount program, and this is something that we rolled out in 2009, and we have more than 40 vendors that are onboard in the discount program. So people can get, you know, discounts on a cup of coffee, they can go to bike shops or entertainment venues, the zipline is one of the merchant discounts, and they can get two-for-one passes to the 51s. So people really like it, and the merchants appreciate the increased exposure to their outlets. ClubRide also has a significant social media presence. We have a Facebook page and followers, we do a weekly post, and we have a daily tweet. We also have a general public awareness campaign that reaches out to everyone. This is something that builds on the One Day a Month campaign that you may be familiar with. That campaign was designed to encourage people just to change their travel behavior one day a month. You know, you don't have to commit to a lifetime, just do it one day a month, you'll see the benefits and the region will benefit. This campaign's tagline is called "Every Mile Counts," and it's a great way of showing people in creative terms. People don't always think in transportation terms, no matter what we think. So this is a campaign that raises the profile of what they're doing. Some of the examples of the art include, last year, ClubRide participants reduced enough miles in Las Vegas to equal 11 round trips to the moon. And people get that. They, commuters participating in ClubRide have reduced enough air pollution to equate to the weight of 370 elephants, so it's just, it's a fun campaign that's out there now. In March alone, the campaign had 11 million impressions through print in many bilingual outlets, online, billboards, and so forth. The nice thing about the general media campaign is that it gives our outreach coordinators, when they go to the work site, a good foundation, letting people know that they could be doing this behavior, and then when they get to the work site, helping them do the desired behavior, switch from driving more often to take advantage of ClubRide rewards. I mentioned before that one of our key customers is the commuter, and we try to be really responsive in understanding what our commuters need, and to the extent that it's allowable under NDOT standards and meets the circular, we try to fulfill those needs. And we know from a general database survey that when asked, "What would motivate you to start reporting your commute more frequently?", 37% said a mobile application would help them do that, or a mobile app. So the software developers on the URS team are actually developing a mobile app for ClubRide right now. So the app is being modeled after our kiosk touchscreen, and we, of course, are hoping for great things, just given the results we've seen on how many more people are reporting on the touchscreen. This mobile app is going to make it easier for people to report their commute on the go, and it's being built with the opportunity for ongoing enhancements, things like giving people real-time transit information, or giving people a chance to see where they are geographically, what ClubRide merchant discounts are located in close proximity to them, so they can click on the mobile app and say, "Where can I get a discount, a cup of coffee, based on where I am now, because I'm a ClubRide member?" Another enhancement that we're rolling out for our customers, not just commuters but also employers, is the chance to expand our customer interactions through a live chat function. This would be something that would augment what we're already doing, which is communicating via phone and email and web inquiry, to bring it online. If an individual's on the ClubRide website for two or three minutes, a chat box would pop up, and it would ask them, "Would you like to have a live chat?", and that would take them to a representative of ours. Individuals can ask their questions, type in, get, you know, detailed information, and our staff can provide them that tailored one-on-one assistance. The neat thing about live chat is that it's not only low cost, but you can save the transcripts and send it to a customer, so let's say they want to capture that information, and they don't want to forget what they just heard over the telephone. It also gives us good data analytics so we can help to monitor ongoing customer inquiries and usage in a more in-depth manner. Our other customer, the employer, we have some enhancements rolling out for them at our next employer networking session. This is something that we do four times a year, every year, and it's a chance to bring all of our employer partners together, give them a chance to network with each other, learn about best practices and creative ways of carrying out ClubRide at the work site. And our training in May will focus on the national best workplaces for commuters. This is a great opportunity to deepen the relationships at those businesses and expand participation by our top partners, who can achieve this national standard of excellence. So we're challenging all of our employer partners in May to rise to the challenge and try to apply to become a best workplaces for commuters. Now, I've talked a lot about our partners, and on this slide, you can see what that really means, who those partners are. You can see, of course, we work with all of the large entertainment venues, the big employers along this strip. We work with private sector, public sector, manufacturing, healthcare, education. Any employer in Clark County is eligible to become a participant of ClubRide. We work proactively, meaning we seek out participants that have 100 or more employees, mostly because that gives us greater economies of scale and it's a more efficient way of doing customer outreach, but any business is certainly welcome to participate. In 2012, we were very happy to see the Venetian and Palazzo come onboard as partners, and also the Win and Encore, and that was a really big win for us, so to speak. And we also saw Ocean Spray come onboard in the city of Henderson. They've got two facilities there. The VA Hospital also just became a partner earlier in the year, and just last month, we signed on Mandarin Oriental and Cancun Resorts Las Vegas. So the program continues to expand and grow, and offers ongoing opportunities for the So some of the ClubRide results, as I mentioned, we've got partners all over, and we've got more than 240 businesses, 26, 28, that have signed on just in the last year. The commuters that we have enrolled in the program over the last year, in the beginning part of 2013, total more than 7,700 new commuters coming in to ClubRide, and what that does is add to our existing database of people who are taking part, bringing that total to over 27,000 commuters in the Las Vegas Valley. Those individuals who are reporting their commute through ClubRide, and frankly, we know that there are some people who are in ClubRide who aren't reporting their commute, whether they, you know, they can't be bothered, they just don't feel like it, so this is data that comes only from the people that are actually reporting, which means it's under-reporting. These folks have pulled six and a half million miles off roads in Southern Nevada, and in the process, pulled 92 tons of pollutants from the air, so that's a really big accomplishment. We're really proud of all the people that are participating in the program. Finally, ClubRide is in the community. We have a number of activities that are underway and also coming up in the coming weeks that I want to just mention briefly. We've been doing our onboard transit outreach events, and this is where our team goes out and rides key RTC routes, commuter routes, like the Sahara Express and the 109, and, you know, north-south in the morning, and we talk to people that are on the bus. Are they aware of ClubRide? If they aren't aware, we can get them to sign up right there, we give them a little more information. If they are members of ClubRide, are they reporting their commute? How can we encourage more of that? And we get that in the trenches, direct from the commuter feedback. It's really valuable for ongoing process improvements. We also have our ClubRide Night with the 51s coming up later in April, and of course, we'll be working closely with RTC on the ongoing promotion and participation in Viva Bike Vegas, which comes up in September. Lastly, ClubRide is an award-winning program. We were recognized, RTC was recognized nationally, by the Association for Commuter Transportation for Excellence in Marketing and Outreach, and more locally, our Gina Campbell, an outreach coordinator on our team, was recognized by the Las Vegas Chamber of Commerce for her excellence in customer service. So when I publicly recognize Gina, she's a coordinator, does a great job with her partners. So as you might imagine, I could probably talk about this all day, but I really appreciate the chance to tell you a little bit more about everything that's going on in ClubRide, and I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the board? Councilwoman.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions. And looking at your employer partners, it's a pretty extensive list of folks, and a lot of them are casino or public-related, and I know that there's other groups like, and I know you have UMC, but maybe other hospitals across the valley, because that's a collection place where a lot of people travel to, and also the university and community college systems, you know, it seems like that they could be a huge partner in terms of not only just their employees, but also the students who are traveling to those facilities as well.
Absolutely. You're absolutely right, and in fact, UNLV, College of Southern Nevada, the hospitals, those are our existing partners, and so they are onboard and very encouraging and supportive of the program. We do not have a kiosk at UNLV yet, nor at College of Southern Nevada. In the pilot rollout, we have 10 of the kiosks installed, and then we have a handful of businesses that have them and are getting their IT guys this week. Sands is actually installing today. Blagio has theirs, we're ruling that at Cosmo, Primm, Diamond Resorts, there are a lot that are in the works, but we've taken possession of the next 30 touchscreens, and so we'll be installing those at each of our priority sites as well. And we gauge that based on reporting and potential for reporting and so on. Thank you.
Commissioner.
So, in Nevada.
Is that Nevada?
Nevada. Do, I didn't see all the local governments on your list.
Well, that was a, there's only so much space for all the icons.
Okay. I just want to make sure that.
But yes.
We do encourage that part, and I was just curious.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we could feel comfortable saying city of Las Vegas, Clark County, Henderson, North Las Vegas.
City of Boulder City, yes.
Okay.
Yes, Clark County's definitely onboard, and we've got, you know, active relationships with those. City of Las Vegas does quite a lot, and they're very onboard. City of Henderson likewise.
How about like the Coscos?
I don't think Costco is a partner at present to my knowledge, but out of 245, I can check and let you know.
Yeah, and just thinking of places where I've seen just miles and miles of parking space that employees have to take up, and there might just be some other areas that are outlined that maybe we would not normally think about, as far as that's concerned. And then your transportation coordinators, you have one then on each side. Is that an employee that works for that company, but they take that job on, and so is a responsible partner, I guess, so to speak?
Right, exactly. It's one of the requirements we have for businesses to be a partner, is we have to have that point person at the business. So sometimes that's human resources, sometimes it's an environmental facilities person or transportation parking, different types of contacts at different businesses, but human resources are the great source for being the TC because they have the best exposure to all the individuals, and we can always go back to them and verify who's still working there, who's coming onboard.
Does the school district do it, ClubRide?
I, again, will have to check with you.
Check and see. That might be someplace, maybe we start even smaller with some of the high schools or something along those lines. Yeah, exactly. Or summer school. I mean, there just might be some things that maybe they hadn't ever thought about that we might be able to promote that part of it. And you'll take anybody, but your goal at least is to try to get employers with 100 folks or more, because it just pencils out probably easier for everybody in the long run.
Right, well, we have greater opportunity for mode shift when we work at bigger destinations, so yes, there are some businesses that will sign on that maybe have 25 employees, and you can get those through, you know, Chamber of Commerce references or business license references, but many of them are so much smaller, and they don't maybe have very many employees that economically, you know, for greater efficiency of the program and to meet the objectives of the grant, we really try to focus on sort of the biggest bang for the buck. And the 100 or more threshold, we've of course got businesses that have 2,000, 5,000, 10,000 employees as well, so they really range in size and scope.
And then do you market on Telemundo or Univision and the Asian newspapers and all those kinds of things as well?
Yes, we do, through the contractor on the program, which is Brain Trust, that does the advertising campaign, and they manage the Every Mile Counts campaign, and have, they advertise in a wide range of publications.
Okay. And then do we have a kiosk? Should the local governments be putting kiosks in at some point down the road?
Yes, and we have one at RTC, in fact.
I should have tracked it when I rode my bike last time.
Yes, indeed.
Without my helmet. Okay.
Uh-oh.
Margaret, help me out on the commuter. When we track if a commuter rides once a week or 30 times a month, are they, is it each activity?
For the ClubRide Rewards Program, a commuter has to track their commute a certain number of times in order to be eligible for the reward prizes. So in order to participate and get any of the benefit out of the rewards aspect of the program, the individual has to report their commute at least four times. Individuals that report between four and 11 times a month are eligible for logoed merchandise. They get things like, we do periodic gift deliveries, things like a coffee mug or a gift bag that's branded with the ClubRide logo. If an individual reports their commute 12 or more times a month, they go into the bigger pool of random drawings for a $25 Visa gift card or a $50 Visa gift card. So there's more of a financial incentive attached to the, what we're after is increased reporting.
And the number, the number 27,000 commuters plus the seven new, as soon as I sign up, am I a statistic there, whether I do it zero or 30 times a month?
Yes. If you sign up for ClubRide, not the ClubRide Rewards component, which is just one of the programs that ClubRide offers, if you sign up to find a carpool partner, let's say, that's open to anybody who lives or works in Clark County. That's universal to citizens. They can take a part. What they can't take part in are some of the ClubRide programs that are employer-driven. So let's say if you are signing up, you would be one of the 27,000 who are in our database who are looking for an alternative. If you also work for a business that's a ClubRide partner, then you're eligible to take part in the other rewards, like the Guaranteed Ride Home Program and the Easy Rider Discounted Pass, and you can report your commute and receive the financial incentives.
Do we ever purge names from the list?
We certainly do, absolutely. We do that, and in fact, that's why you don't see just a straight-up trajectory of the database growing by leaps and bounds. If it did, that would be a clear indicator that the data probably weren't that good. Likewise with our partners, we purge partners. So if a business goes out of business, their employees are going to be. So if a business goes out of business, their employees are going to be purged from the database, because they're not working at the same facility, their data's no longer valid. We don't do it just outright. We have a deactivation process where we go in, and we have several steps and procedures for how we do this. We deactivate commuters that are no longer actively involved. We also do a lot of validation and quality assurance with our TCs. So we bring updated lists out to the TCs, and they can cross-reference who's still working there, update address information and phone and so on. After a period of time of an individual being deactivated, if we can't get a hold of them, we haven't been able to verify their data, then they get deleted from the database. And if they want to participate again, they have to re-enroll. It's really important to do that, because if you're a carpooler looking for a carpool partner, you don't want to call four people who don't work at the same company that they said they did. Makes it more challenging, of course.
What are your biggest obstacles as far as growing the program?
I would say the biggest obstacle here as well as anywhere is just the mindset of individuals. You know, people love their cars, that's the challenge everywhere. In Southern Nevada, we have a little bit higher of a drive-alone rate than we do in some other areas of the country. So people like to drive alone, and it's continually overcoming the obstacle of, oh, I couldn't possibly, to, oh, maybe I could try it, to, oh, I tried it and I actually benefited, to, oh, I guess I could do this a little more often. Look, I've changed modes. And so that's why I mentioned we take it on a sales cycle, because you really are trying to get behavior change out of people. And just like you wouldn't, you know, change up your laundry detergent overnight, and, you know, you have to have the sample, you have to have the coupon, you have to have a reason to try it, you have to have a good experience, and you have to be able to stick with it. So that's why the layered benefit of working at the business, where they get the reinforcement, and then working directly to the commuter, to give them the encouragement, give them the incentive, give them the reward, that's what creates the long-term mode shift. So I would say it's no other obstacle than what would exist anywhere. It's the mindset. We're a country that loves our cars, and just continually overcoming that is the ongoing challenge.
And you mentioned an event in May?
Yes. Yes, we do what we call TC, again, transportation coordinators. That's our networking and training. So we do four of those a year, one every quarter, where we bring all of our TCs together to give them an opportunity, first, to network with each other, understand what's going on at other like businesses, and then we have a training portion of the program. So in May, our TC event will be held to roll out the Best Workplaces for Commuters Challenge. So we'll be letting our businesses know, we're challenging them to step it up and get recognized for that national recognition. And other program training that we've done other, you know, years prior, you know, things like how to market Club Ride on a shoestring budget, and how to really get creative, and strategies for going green at your work site, different types of topical training that really just keep our commuters, I'm sorry, our employers engaged.
And I just have to comment, I've been to some of those events that you guys have put together, and they're really fun. They do a really good job of making them entertaining as opposed to just purely training.
I mean, we love transportation, but some people think it's, you know, it's not on everybody's top list. Get to make it fun.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There's probably a couple of us that will continue to drive solo, because some of us have road with Commissioner G, so we'll continue to ride solo.
You can keep your car, you just have to put somebody else in the passenger seat. Thank you.
And with that, if there are no other questions, that concludes your general manager's report.
And Tina, if I could.
Yes.
Just to clarify the policy on public comment. If you want to speak on an item specifically posted on our agenda, please fill out a public comment card. They're located throughout the room, out in the lobby. RTC staff member will collect the cards from you. If you want to speak on an agenda item, which would be the first public comment period coming up shortly, and then at the end of the meeting, we'll have our second public comment period for those wishing to enlighten the board on world affairs.
Very good. With that, we come to item number three, which is to receive the Nevada Department of Transportation Director's Report from Rudy Malafon.
Thank you, Tina. Definitely, our hands have been really full with the legislature. Assembly Bill 18 was a road relinquishment bill, is going forward, at least out of committee. This, tomorrow is the deadline to get bills out of committee and to the others, onto the larger group to vote on a bill. The fuel tax indexing measure that's being considered for Clark County is still out there. I've been briefing the governor about it. He wanted to understand some of the details in that bill, and I understand that the members of the coalition have met with his chief of staff, Gerald Gardner, to kind of give him some details. There's also, we testified this week on the Public-Private Partnerships Bill and the concept of high occu, I always have trouble with this word, occupancy, high occupancy toll lanes or hot lanes on US 95 and I-15. I'm sorry that Councilman Ross is not here, because I know that was a hot issue on his campaign, but the issue was heard, at least the bill was heard before the Assembly Transportation Committee. We don't know if it's going to make it out of committee, but we wanted to try to make sure that they understood that we're not trying for this big grandiose plan for toll roads and toll lanes down here, but just where it makes sense, where we have additional capacity. And the benefit of hot lanes is it just gets more users in the available capacity on these, on our HOV lanes or carpool lanes. The other issue, the Transportation Board issue, SB 322 was heard, and we definitely, although we opposed it about the changes to the Transportation Board membership and getting more members from Southern Nevada on that board and eliminating the constitutional officers on that board, we definitely hear very loud and clearly about the concern with equity in Southern Nevada and the sense that too much money is going to the north or other areas of the state. As a Department of Transportation, we have to look at a statewide approach and still address some of the rural needs as well as the issues and needs in Washoe County and some of the areas around Carson City, but we definitely hear you loud and clear on that issue, and although we oppose the actual bill. We testified neutral on the two cent a gallon increase in the gas tax, Senator Sagerblum's bill. Definitely, we have some challenges trying to meet all the needs in capacity preservation and various other programs, safety projects and such, bike and pedestrian trails. There's just not enough money to go around, so we, although we testify neutral on that bill, we realize that there are benefits of receiving additional revenue. On the federal front, Congress did pass a continuing resolution. That's basically an extension of the, they don't have an agreement on a budget, per se, but it funds transportation continuing to the end of the federal fiscal year, September 30th of this year. So we were pleased that they took that action. The House had considered a slight reduction of six-tenths of a percent, but the Senate passed the resolution without that reduction in funding, but the, and the president signed it with that, without that reduction that the House wanted. However, one of the things to note is that the federal government used some general funds to kind of prop up the Highway Trust Fund under the spending levels authorized for MAP 21. That's the current transportation authorization. So what Congress looked at was, well, there's some issues with using general funds and whether they were under that sequestration cut. So we expected to get about, roughly about a three million dollar cut still, which is less than one percent of the federal funds that the state of Nevada receives, so not a huge impact to the state of Nevada, but still, it's a little bit less revenue, and the president yesterday submitted his budget for transportation to Congress, has an increase in funding that was requested, but one of the things that it's a concern is how is that increase going to be, how is the revenue going to be raised to fund that increase in funding for transportation? Currently, the federal gas tax brings in about thirty-five billion a year, and the president's request for transportation was fifty billion dollars, and that included not only highways and transit, but some rail and aviation improvements as well. Some updates on Project Neon, we hired three advisors. We're using C.H. Toomhill as our technical advisor, but we hired, Ernst &amp; Young is our financial advisor on this idea of a public-private partnership to construct the phases one and three of Project Neon. And just to go over the scope of work on Project Neon again, it's widening I-15 from Sahara approximately up to Spaghetti Bowl, building that direct connect ramp for the HOV lanes on 95 to the express lanes on I-15, doing some improvements to the Charleston interchange, so reconstruct the Charleston interchange, and some other major improvements, but including some access at Alta that's not there currently from Interstate 15. The other advisor that we hired was a legal advisor, Nosiman, but we're looking at three alternatives to deliver this phases one and three of Project Neon. We have a design-build option that would be funded by our normal bonding, so the state can sell bonds for a twenty-year term. We'll see what we could, what it would cost to go that route. We're also looking at design-build-finance and design-build-finance-operate-and-maintain. Obviously, with operating and maintaining the system, we're probably looking at more than just the limits of Project Neon, because it's very limited from Sahara to the Spaghetti Bowl and the bridge that connects the HOV lanes to the express lanes, but it is an option that we are looking at. It would cost more, so that was my concern, is how much does it cost for the operation and maintenance? And we're going to take those three options to our board around June and get one, one option decided on and go forward to the procurement of a public-private partnership. Now, as the request for proposals is developed, that'll come back, that'll be drafted, come back to our Transportation Board, and they'll look at making a decision on that around February of next year. So this process takes some time, but you might have read in the media that the project was two months behind schedule. We feel that it's necessary to take that additional two months to look at these three different options that I talked about for delivery of the project, and make sure that we're making the right decision to use taxpayer funds wisely, and make sure that we're going down the right path. We don't want to go out with various options to the public, I mean, the private partners on this project, because it's very expensive to chase this project and develop proposals. On the Boulder City Bypass, we have our first project out there for doing the tortoise fencing. We do have some issues with eminent domain and acquiring three major parcels. We received a settlement offer of thirty-three million dollars on one of the parcels for an inverse condemnation claim. Just to explain, inverse condemnation is when the property owner says that some actions of the government affected the value of his property. Either maybe you have a measure that doesn't allow him to develop his property the way he wanted to, or prevents access that's not reasonable access. So we're dealing with those issues on eminent domain, but we're proceeding with the construction project and kind of trying to find out, going through the court system on this eminent domain, actions can take some time, so we want to make sure that, how much risk there is on acquiring the properties that are necessary to build the first phase of the Boulder City Bypass, which is from the south of Henderson up to the interchange at US 95 that goes to Searchlight. We will also be giving a presentation to the Boulder City Council. Mayor Tobler, I'm sure, would be pleased to know that we want to give more detailed information to the citizens of Boulder City as we proceed with the project and apprise them of the schedule updates and the issues that we're facing on that project. And that concludes the Director's Report.
Comments or questions for the Director? Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you, Rudy, for the report. Is it 322, SB, is the board change?
Yes.
232?
Three, 322, SB 322.
322, okay. That's the one where it would change, the constitutional members would go off, and then you would have eight from the south and one from the north and one from the rural counties. Eleven members, I think, is what it comes back up to.
Yeah, two from Washoe.
Two from Washoe.
One from rural.
And I watched one of the hearings on it. Tell me what N-dots, as N-dot, because I know you got a board that you have to deal with, what was, what's your main concern or your main opposition?
The main opposition is that we feel that it is good to have the constitutional members, and we've seen other states, as a Department of Transportation, basically we're at cabinet level. My position is a cabinet member for the governor. Definitely, the governor wants to have a say in transportation. And typically, what I've seen in other states is sometimes a transportation commissioner or board is made up of members throughout the state. In our case, we have three at-large members that represent the three districts. So we have a district based here in Las Vegas that goes up to about the middle of the state. You have the Washoe area, and you have the Elko area. So we have at-large members. But typically, what we see in other state DOTs is that commission is advisory, and the governor typically makes the call on some of those issues. We feel that having the benefit of the constitutional members, also you have the Attorney General and the governor are two of the four constitutional members. They are also members on the Board of Examiners. So it gives us the benefit of having two out of the three members of the Board of Examiners so that we don't have to take all our contracts to a separate board for approval. So our board is currently engaged on approval of major, the construction contracts are over three million, go to them. Any agreements over three hundred thousand dollars, or I believe, maybe five hundred thousand, I need to check that, but any major agreements, like service agreements, go to our board for approval as well. So they're very engaged and ask a lot of questions. If you watched one of our Transportation Board meetings, they can ask a lot of questions. So they're very engaged in oversight of the Department of Transportation. But equity of the, where the money gets spent across the state is a huge issue, and I'm aware of it, because I've, you know, lived down here in Southern Nevada before I took the position up there. I've worked in both places, so I know kind of the political issues and the needs of Southern Nevada, so, and they are great, so we understand that.
Yeah, and I think, I think you'll bring a different perspective, but I think the past history has been that the South sent its money north and rural and really didn't get an adequate or equitable return on its dollars. And I think a good example of that, and no disrespect for the governor, but putting in, what, sixty-eight million or whatever for the Carson City interchange where the road is to nowhere, just is another loss of dollars. I'd rather have that applied to the I-11, and so I'm hoping that sometime that conversation come up. I don't know if your board weighs in on that. I know the governor put it in his budget, and that wasn't something that actually came through the Transportation Board, but I do think that those conversations should start sooner rather than later, because I don't want Southern Nevada, we get a toll road and they get the money, and that just doesn't seem to be an equitable fix as well. So I do think that 322, in my mind, should pass, hopefully, because I do think it balances it, it doesn't hurt the north. In fact, they get one more seat at the table that they didn't have, and you bring expertise into that part of it. So I think it'll be an interesting piece of legislation to monitor as things go along. A second piece, could you remind me, so there's two fuel tax bills. There's the one for the commissioners to vote on, correct? And that is?
AB 413.
Four thirteen, yeah, 413. AB 413. And then you mentioned something, Senator Sagerblum, is that the statewide concept of the two cents of the fuel tax?
Yes, that was SB 377.
Okay, so both of those are similar. They don't impact us, but it will give the state some additional revenue, and then there's a potential vote of the people down the road, but it lets us enact it, correct? And the same thing's modeled the same way? Have they done any amendments to either of them at this point?
I haven't heard of amendments to either one of those since they've been heard. We'll probably hear more about it.
Probably after tomorrow night.
Yes, and some bills are exempt, depending on the nature of the bills, but I'm not sure if either one of these is exempt.
They have money, they probably would comply with the rules to be exempt bills. So I would guess that gives us a little bit more breathing time to see how that all flushes out. Okay, thank you very much.
Councilwoman.
Thank you. And a question with regards to the SB 322. I understood that it was moved to Senate Financial, Senate Finance Committee? That's where, now, and that supposedly there's some concern about the fiscal note that's attached to it, because there's a cost of eighty dollars each day that each committee member would meet, so there was a fiscal cost of eighty dollars plus travel costs. And I wonder, in this day of technology, you know, things could certainly be done where people are telecommunicating, and so we wouldn't have the huge costs related to the committees meeting if, in fact, SB 322 did pass.
Rudy, I'll weigh in also. I'm not so much concerned about the pass, but, and you've mentioned it, I think, in your testimony and here today, it's more, from my perspective, the perception of, with all due respect to the state, you know, Washoe and the rurals, the perception is that all due respect to the state, you know, Washoe and the rurals, the perception is that, moving forward, Southern Nevada has earned priority, and it's certainly reflective in the major projects, but I think the part of 322 helps eliminate that perception. At least bills, what is seen as more equity and more representation. And if I'm not mistaken, the bill actually allows the governor to appoint, so we could certainly keep those synergies with the constitutional offices serving on both. So, I would, and again, I respect your position as far as opposing certain parts of the bill, but it's important, and you've reflected on that this morning, it's important that the perception becomes a reality, that we start seeing action and funding and projects moving forward. It's, I know you're in a difficult spot as far as the Boulder City Bypass and Project Neon, but it comes a point where the analysis, you know, we've been doing this for many, many years, and despite the recession, we seem to have a window of opportunity to take action. And that's, again, from my perspective, I'd like to see some kind of movement and not, we're going to take two months back and make sure we do it right. I think we're at a point where we have to make some decisions and move forward. It may not be the best decision, but if we wait a couple more years hoping for that best decision, we'll find ourselves in two years talking about the same thing. So, I would just encourage, with our support, of course, moving forward, starting to visibly show Southern Nevada that this is a new N-dot, that Southern Nevada is going to get its fair share, and the critical projects that have been on this list for many, many years start to become a reality.
Mayor?
I would agree with what you said. I did want to point out that I think a lot of times when we mention Boulder Bypass, we would prefer the name Interstate 11. The phase that you're talking about, Director, basically connects the 515 to the 95, which isn't even part of Boulder City. So, that is part of the overall project. It obviously benefits us because it removes a kind of a choking point at Railroad Pass and a safety issue there, but I think it is important that it stresses the regional value of the project and not just Boulder City, so.
This I-11, I know that everyone has deemed it like the lifeblood of the next generation in Las Vegas, but it's a 20, 30-year project, and all these pieces that need to be put in place now so when it ultimately starts taking effect, that we don't have a beautiful I-11 into the valley and then stuck here at the spaghetti bowl or stuck in the current infrastructure. So, it's all, you know, it's certainly a very complicated and complex puzzle, but we need to take advantage of the pieces that we can handle today, today and the next few years, so we start building that infrastructure, building that foundation, so when I-11 does come in 20 years from now, people aren't complaining about this board and you and the governor and the state for sitting on its hands for years. Enough. The horse is down, it's dead. We'll stop. But thank you, Rudy. Thank you for the work that you do.
Rudy, can I ask you to kind of expand on a seed of thought that Commissioner Brown just planted, and that is that, so it is an 11-member board where the, as I understand it, the governor would be allowed to appoint those 11 members. Wouldn't he be able to take those constitutional officers and appoint them to this board? And so therefore, kind of?
I think there were some requirements or language in there about the background or education experience of the members. I think that they, one of the proponents was talking about engineering experience or some type of experience, but what I've seen in other state commissions is they're usually just representatives of regions of the state that have either some political appointment, you know, maybe city council members or other commission members around the state is what I've seen when they do have an advisory board or commission for transportation. But I think that the issue is to look at the language in the bill and see what the experience requirements are for it to be appointed to the board, because I recall reading that in the news story about it, that there were some experience requirements.
And probably will, there should be. Okay. Okay. With that, we will move on to item number four, which is to conduct a comment period for citizens' participation.
This is the time set aside if anyone wishes to speak to the board on a specific posted agenda item. Now is your opportunity. I have no cards.
I'm Patricia Anderson. I've been coming to the meetings since 2001.
And Patricia, you want to speak on what agenda item?
Well, the special agenda is, well, the gender on I'm really speaking about, I can talk to at the end of the, at the end of the program. The drivers, the drivers are great drivers.
Do you want to speak at the end of the meeting?
Well, you want me to do it at the end, or you want me to do it now?
Well?
Well, actually, at this point?
You can have your choice because you're a frequent visitor, so we'll give you the choice.
Well, like I said again, my thing is, at this point now, your drivers are great drivers. I've been riding the buses since 2001. Well, we had Kat, what have you, we've had all the ups and downs, but we made it through it all. Right now, at this point, I feel the drivers, they're frustrated because they don't know exactly their future. And another thing, like I said, they're great, they're great at this point. I know Viola, I know you're out of the contract, I understand the situation far as that is concerned, but I think that this point now, I really think we should really consider that we should really stay with them. I mean, I know we have, I mean, I know you've made changes, I know you've made your decision, but these drivers, number one, they're experienced. Number two, they're dedicated. And they're on time. I mean, I've been out sometimes 11 o'clock at night coming home, and they're 11 o'clock, they don't get home till 9 o'clock the next morning, what have you, all different shifts, and they're there. So, as I say, I feel that we should really think. I mean, I know, I've been doing a lot of thinking myself and a lot of praying for them, and I think that at this point now, we have great drivers that, and I think we should really just keep them. I mean, I know, keep them intact the way we are at this point. This is my personal opinion. I won't hold up any more of the meeting, but I wish them all luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on an agenda item? Seeing and hearing no one, we'll close this portion of the public comment.
And our next item will be your consent agenda, but we do need to wait until we have a quorum on the board before we can take that item. Oh, and there we go, there's our quorum.
Timing is impeccable.
So, your consent agenda is comprised of items five through 39 and may be taken in one motion.
Motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? And motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is item number 40, which is to receive information on the May 2013 commission meeting and direct staff accordingly. The regular meeting of the RTC is scheduled for May 9th of 2013, but Nevada revised statute 354.596 requires that the RTC set a public hearing for the tentative budget on the third Thursday in May of each year, which this year falls on May 16th of 2013. Rather than hold two meetings, it is recommended that the RTC reschedule their May meeting to the new date of May 16th, 2013, to address normal business and conduct a public hearing for the budget. The meeting would be held at the regular place and time, at the Clark County Commission Chambers at 8:45, or at an alternate place and time to be determined by the RTC. If the commission approves this change, notification will be published.
Entertain a motion? Motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 41 is to receive a fuel tax indexing presentation that was recently provided to the Nevada Legislature. So, back in March, a small group of us went up to Carson City, including Dever March, to brief the Assembly Taxation Committee on the, on AB 413, which is the motor vehicle which enables Clark County to consider a motor vehicle fuel tax. First slide. So, what we did is we reviewed with them our funding sources for our Streets and Highways Program, which, as you know, comes primarily from fuel taxes, that nine cents per gallon that we've been getting, that same flat tax of nine cents per gallon that we've been getting since 1995, which right now equates to about $60 million a year, and also from sales tax revenue as well, which right now, sales tax contributes about $36 million a year to the Streets and Highways Program. We walked through with the committee where this money comes from and how it is spent in both of those categories. We started out with motor vehicle fuel tax, and you can see here, our very first line item there, our revenue, motor vehicle fuel tax, again, nine cents a gallon, which it has been, same nine cents a gallon since 1995, brings us in $61 million a year, and that number is decreasing. From interest income, we have a bit of money, which brings us to a total revenue of about $61.5 million a year. And here's how we spend that money that comes in. Of that, 30, almost $37 million goes to debt service, including principal and interest. This year, this is 2013's number, we also had a one-time payoff on medium-term notes of $8 million. We have administrative expenses for a total expense line item of $53.459 million, which leaves us, available for projects at least in 2013, $8 million for our Streets and Highways Program from the motor vehicle fuel tax. If we, we asked Mark Trozdahl, our Director of Finance, to do a 10-year projection, what we would be getting from this source of revenue over the next 10 years, and we come up with $145.5 million. Next slide. From sales tax, first line item up there, we have that $36.5 million. We also get some, a small amount of jet aviation fuel tax. We have some interest income and miscellaneous incomes. Revenue's bringing us to $40.7 million. And how we're spending that money right now, for debt service, about almost $28 million is going to debt service. A portion goes to Clark County air quality, as well as a portion goes to our FAST system. We have miscellaneous administrative services and supplies coming to a total expenditure of $37.6 million, leaving us with 3.1, almost $3.2 million remaining. We asked Mark Trozdahl again to project for 10 years, and we come up with $78.1 million. Next slide. Now, in the past, so those two numbers together, if you take the annualized amount, divide it by per year, we are nowhere near what we have formerly had in the past for investing in streets and highways. In the past, we've had $136 million a year, and for the coming years, we are going to have a whopping $22.4 million a year. Next slide. This is due to a couple reasons. So, basically, this is another graph that kind of shows you the decline of our ability to spend. In 2009, we had $34.9 million from motor vehicle fuel tax. We now have $8.1 million, and that is for a couple reasons. One is that people are buying less fuel. Since 1995, since we first started this tax, the number of, since that point, that time, vehicles have certainly become much more efficient. Also, gas prices have increased, people are driving less. But also, we have taken the funding that we did have, and we have bonded against it in order to be able to continue to meet the demands of our Streets and Highway Program. So, over these two numbers, from $34 million a year down to $8 million a year, is about a 77% decrease in the amount of money we have to spend. Combine that with the next slide, which is the loss of purchasing power. If you were to use the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, we've lost about 36% from that nine cents, and if you were to compare it to the Producer Price Index, our purchasing power has seen a 58% loss. Now, where this really starts to hurt us, next slide, is when we need to secure local funds in order to match federal funds. And it's an 80/20 split traditionally. Traditionally, the feds will kick in 80% as long as the local governments can come up with the 20%. From here on out, increasingly, it is going to be hard for us to come up with that 20%. And it gets, it's compounded, it's getting worse, because other communities, when competitive grants are announced, like Tiger Funds, communities will often ante up more than just the traditional 20%. In the last round, we saw communities that were offering up 50% and higher. And as part of that last round, we actually had a couple of projects that we had thrown in, the Flamingo BRT route, and also Main and Commerce, which is a complete street investment. And we thought those were two very competitive projects, but we did not, we were not awarded for either one. Those went to communities that threw in a much higher amount of money for their local match. So, we got with the jurisdictions, and we asked them to help us identify the unfunded project needs for the next 10 years. What are we not going to be able to fund at this point? Together, they came up with a, next slide, they came up with a list of $4.5 billion worth of needed investment in transportation infrastructure. Now, that was a very big list, a very big ask. We asked, we got back together with them, and we said, let narrow it down to those critical projects that are truly needed for the region. Projects that we are going to need that are significant to assist us towards our goals for economic growth and diversification. We narrowed it down to $800 million worth of projects. The projects that are included, and this is just a sampling list, but the I-11 Boulder City Bypass project, the beltway, upgrading, finishing the beltway to freeway standards, which means eliminating some of the at-grade crossings and doing some additional bridges. Also, high up on the list for us is the Exit 118 in Mesquite. Next slide, widening Ann Road, widening 95 from Ann to Kyle Canyon. FAST, continued investment in the FAST infrastructure, Maryland Parkway, roads and transportation infrastructure investments that are going to be required as part of our travel and tourism, Rossi's new convention district. We all recognize the fact that travel and tourism is, continues to be very, very important to Southern Nevada, and we, in order to stay globally competitive, have got to be considering how our visitors are getting from where they are to where they need to go, as well as complete street projects. Increasingly, there's a lot of importance and emphasis being put on creating safe places for all modes of transportation. So, over the next three-year period, if we were to be able to let out that, those critical projects, that $800 million worth of work, we would expect to create about 11,000 jobs, of which about 6,500 would be direct construction-related jobs. We do have the RTC, you all have given us very strong direction, that when money comes our way, that we get it out on the street, and we have done that. We have a history of creating jobs. In fact, when we had stimulus money, which came to about $169 million, yes, we were able to get on the street 944 jobs, of which 551 were direct construction jobs, and we got the projects out fast. In fact, the Sahara Express was the only project in Nevada that received a Tiger grant, and it was, the project was completed within two years of notice of the federal funding, and we were one of the first projects in the nation to be up and operating as a result of being awarded that Tiger-funded grant. We also created jobs when last session, there was a special session which passed SB 5, which unsunsetted an eighth of a tenth, eighth of a cent of sales tax, and in doing so, we were able to create 2,000 jobs of direct and indirect jobs. Next slide. So, in closing, I just want to emphasize the fact, and we reminded the legislature, that we've got, moving forward, only $22.4 million a year to continue to invest in projects in Southern Nevada. And what does that mean to the average person? Well, here's what it means. It means that from here on out, all that we can build in Southern Nevada is one interchange a year, or one mile of roadway in each of the jurisdictions, or one beltway segment without bridges. And it goes without saying that all of those are without any kind of right-of-way or land acquisition efforts as well. So, with that, that was our presentation to the legislature, and I'll take any questions.
Comments or questions?
I'd just like to comment. I think what this, what is before the legislature right now is the enabling?
Correct.
Legislation, enabling language that allows the county then to come back and consider it here at the county level. So, what we're asking for is for the legislature to move it forward and allow us the same opportunity that's been afforded every county in the state of Nevada.
Yes, thank you for emphasizing. Yes, thank you for emphasizing that. You're right. Right now, the way that the statute reads is that all counties let, with populations of less than 700,000, are, have enabling legislation to enact an indexed motor vehicle fuel tax if they want. Clark is specifically excluded from that. And right now, Washoe County is the only county that is taking advantage of that.
And clearly, with us seeing less and less resources coming in from the federal government, and less being available through the state of Nevada, we have to be looking at solutions to, to maintaining and building our roads in Southern Nevada.
And we are not the only community right now that's struggling this. This same discussion that we're having right now with our legislator and with our elected leadership is the same that many, many states and counties are having with theirs as well across the United States. The fact that a lot of us have got a flat tax, and the fact that we're losing purchasing power, and that there's less federal funds, exact same discussion that's going on, even at the federal level.
And even with that, we continue to have roads that need to be maintained, and we still have issues. So, thank you.
Commissioner.
Thank you. Along those lines, then, I would hope, policy-wise, we should maybe have a discussion, that when legislation comes available, we probably should never say never, and allow for us to be always in an enabling part of it, because then you have to play catch-up. And I think that's actually what happened, is the southern part of the state was busy focusing on other issues and said, no, we don't want to be part of that legislation. And here we are, five, six years later, having the discussion. And it's not just RTC. I'm thinking even of the school districts, because when I did my original legislation to allow the bond rollover, Washoe absolutely refused to be in, and I said, just let yourself stay in, and they refused. And now they're like, oops, why didn't we do that? So there's examples out there. So whenever enabling, we probably should have a discussion of, maybe as a policy, that we are inclusive. It doesn't mean you have to take advantage of it, but it gives you that opportunity down the road to reconsider, or maybe circumstances change, or there's new, a new focus. Now, hopefully, the indexing, it's regressive. I, I don't personally like it, but I think it's the one alternative that we have to actually do something for our roads. But I do hope that the funding is flexible enough, that it's, a lot of it's for maintenance, because we do have a lot of problems there. Some possibly for more bus pullouts or something along those lines, so that you're, lessening the congestion, maybe the complete streets type thing. Because I think we've gone past, other than Project NEON, just adding lanes, is really looking at other multimodal programs. And so I hope that that's part of our newer focuses. We don't need just that many more asphalt roads. We do need ways that help with the easing of the congestion, but also give people an opportunity to get out of their cars, if that's the case, through some, some type of activity. So I don't think it's restrictive, is it?
The motor vehicle fuel tax money cannot be used specifically for transit or transit operations, it needs to be used for street infrastructure.
Street. But to me, that's where bus, if we identify in a local government that it's a congestion issue, then I think we should be, properly be able to use the funding for that part of it then. Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And it's a little bit of the chicken and the egg. To truly see the TDM and the transit and the carpooling, we need the infrastructure. So it's...
Partnership. Okay. And with that, that concludes. If there are no other questions, that concludes item number 41. Moving on, item number 42, I'll turn over to Assistant General Manager MJ Maynard. And actually, for the next few items, MJ, you'll take those.
I would like to turn over to Commissioner G. to receive a presentation on the tentative budget for fiscal year 2014, and direct the Department of Finance to submit the tentative budget to the Department of Taxation by April 15th, as required under Nevada revised statute This tentative budget, along with a detailed report of the proposed revenues and expenditures, are due to be filed with the Clark County Clerk, and will be placed on record at the RTC for review by the public on or before April 15th. The document includes all agency funds. A presentation regarding the tentative budget will be provided. The RTC staff will be available to answer questions from the RTC Board of Commissioners and the public. RTC personnel request that the Commissioners direct the Department of Finance to submit the tentative budget to the Nevada Department of Taxation by April 15th, 2013, as required under this statute. The statute also requires that a public hearing on the tentative budget be held on the third Thursday in May. At that time, the Commission will be asked to conduct a public hearing on this budget.
Our Director of Finance, Mark Trozdahl, will present now to you.
Thank you, MJ. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. First thing I'd like to take care of is you have a new version of the budget document that will be submitted to the state. We changed that out to correct a few minor errors in the previous version that was included in your backup. We'll start out by talking about our revenues. Popular topic is our sales tax. You can see that our sales tax has been rebounding. Currently, year-to-date, for fiscal 13, we are at a 6.1% increase in sales tax. We are budgeting a 3% increase in sales tax for fiscal year Our motor vehicle fuel tax, which our General Manager has just addressed with the indexing, we are projecting for the fifth year, flat revenues in the motor vehicle fuel tax. And again, we get nine cents a gallon. We receive nine cents a gallon. No matter what the price is, we receive nine cents a gallon. Our fare revenue, we are budgeting that at $70 million, which we projected fiscal year 13 at. So we are being conservative in estimating our fare revenue for fiscal 14. This is a pie chart of our funding sources. As you can see, sales tax makes up the majority of our revenue at 46%. The next one is passenger fares are at 20% of our total funding sources, and motor vehicle fuel tax is at 19%. And grants, we're projecting for fiscal 14 at 10%. The way we spend our money, you can see the big red piece of the pie, is services and supplies at 43%, and most of that is our transit service, the services and supplies related to transit. Then capital outlay is at 34%, debt service is 16%, and salaries and benefits were at 7% for fiscal 14. One of our large contracts in transit is our paratransit contract. You can see that this cost has increased over the past years. This next year for 14, we're estimating a 5% increase in our contract cost for paratransit. In the past, we've seen a little bit larger increases, but we think this is leveling out some. This is a chart which shows about the same thing for the ridership on paratransit. Our fixed route contract cost, you can see, back in fiscal 9, we topped out at $97 million. We had a few years of service cuts. And now in fiscal 13, we're estimating $88 million for the cost of that contract. That $88 million includes $3 million of startup cost, and that's why it, again, reduces in fiscal 14, back down to $85 million. Our fixed route ridership, we are projecting that to be level next year. We have no anticipated fare increases for next year, and we're being conservative in estimating that ridership at a close to level. Our service hours, this is a chart that shows, again, fiscal year 9, we peaked at 1,550,000 hours of service, and we carefully cut that each year due to the recession. And in fiscal 13, we are adding back about 24,000 service hours. And for fiscal 14, we've programmed in an additional 46,000 hours of service. So we'll carefully add that back in as we can do that. This is a pie chart, just showing what our transit expenditures are made up of. 88% of the transit budget is spent on transit services. And you can see, 5% is spent for transfers out to support our general fund, and then 7% on salaries and benefits. Moving to our capital budget, we're budgeting $33.3 million in capital for fiscal 14. One of the really nice things we're budgeting for is a transit mobility center. We're going to, we anticipate spending $6.5 million on that. That is a center where paratransit folks, customers, will be trained to use the fixed route service. We're also going to invest in another 150 bus shelters and 100 benches at a cost of $3.2 million. We're going to buy 70 paratransit CNG vehicles at a cost of $8 million. The UNLV Transit Center will be finishing up early in the fiscal year, so most of the expense there will be spent in fiscal 13, and only .9 million in fiscal 14. We do have a state of good repair grant to repair the bus yard. We call it IBMF up at Simmons in North Las Vegas, and we will spend $2.5 million in improving that bus yard. We're also going to, we're studying right now to increase the power and communication for our ticket vending machines on the Las Vegas Strip and downtown. This $3.3 million is estimated on the, at the high end, depending on what those actual costs come in, based on the studies that are being done, on what it'll cost to bring better power and communication to those ticket vending machines. For our Streets and Highways program, we plan on spending $60 million in fiscal 14 in motor vehicle fuel tax, and $55 million of sales tax. Now, I need to clarify that, in that this money is carried over year to year. Earlier, our General Manager talked about $22 million being what is available to spend on projects in the future. That's an accurate number, unless it's not all spent. We still have, in our balances, bond proceeds in the sales tax. From SB5, we have about $30 million of bond proceeds there. So this money does roll over if it's not used, and these are our balances that we anticipate spending in 14. To look at our, our debt, we currently have in sales tax, balance of $281.5 million in debt on sales tax bonds. Our annual debt service for 14 will be $25 million. Our motor vehicle fuel tax bonds, we have outstanding $459 million of debt, and our debt service for fiscal 14 will be $42.6 million. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be glad to take any questions you might have.
Comments or questions from the board? Commissioner June Kiliani?
Thank you. On the bus stops, that's in addition to the ones that we had on the consent agenda, I'm assuming. Didn't we have something? Yeah, bus shelters, general market bus shelters, item 28. That was only $71,000. So I'm assuming your $3 million in your budget is in addition to that. Okay. And then, they definitely need one at Bus Stop 204 on Carey Avenue. It's not even in my district, but I was driving by. There's just a desert sitting there, and a person standing against a pole. So I know Carl's got it on, I'm pretty sure he has it on his list. He does a pretty good job of making sure. Right, Carl? These, the budget reflects then, the negotiated contract that we did with the employees and management, correct? Okay. And so, that's built in, and that's a three-year program, so we wouldn't even realize anything till another couple of years down the road. In, in the capital, where is the money for bus replacement? Is that in capital, or is that in?
It is. It's in capital.
Okay. And so, we have, I'm sure, a schedule of replacements going in, okay?
We do. We have a 10-year plan.
Okay. And then, when you, you mentioned the fare ridership, was it 20% of the budget?
Yes.
Is that good, bad, indifferent? Is it increased? I thought it had increased. It was a slight uptick from a couple of years back, but I'm...
It has. It's a wonderful thing in my book.
Okay.
Yeah. At a national, if we were to compare us nationally, yes, we have one of the highest fare box recovery ratios in the nation.
We should PR that. I mean, that's very good then. Especially because we had rate increases that came in during that, that time, and you still had to increase
We did, yeah.
Ridership then. Okay. I was just curious if that was a good percentage to have or not.
It is, yeah.
Thank you.
On the service hours expansion, those are just, that doesn't impact any route expansion that would impact our paratransit reach. Is that correct?
I can ask MJ to address it, but yes, you're, you're correct. Anytime that we're going to expand a fixed route, it certainly has to take into consideration any impact or extension to paratransit, which is a very costly extension to us, but yeah.
The additional service hours are really to give back what we've taken away.
On existing routes.
That's correct.
And similar to Commissioner G.'s question, our debt service percentage is 16%? How do we fare industry average on that?
Well, that's a good question. I'd need to look at that, and compare that with other transit agents, or other really MPOs. Our debt is mostly MPO. So we're kind of a unique agency in that we have transit and the streets and highways. So we'd have to kind of carve that out and compare it.
Well, you have an extra week. So you have five weeks for the next meeting in May.
Okay.
And so, no urgency, but I think that's important, especially in light of the indexing and some of the things that may come down for decisions. Be important to have that Commissioner.
Thank you. I found my other note. On the paratransit, is there a respective, it's starting to level off, you said. Is that because we've been expanding nonprofit assistance then through that? And do we now start to see a commensurate reduction in that cost?
We've had a pretty aggressive demand management initiative, but MJ, if you'd like to address that. MJ's been stellarly coordinating this.
Actually, Sandy Stinko and her staff really have to be commended for expanding that model, and that's certainly is part of that leveling off.
It's still high, though, so we're still subsidizing through your other portion. Out of curiosity, when students come out of the district in transition, are you all part, is Sandy part of their ridership program through their IEPs? Do you know?
We're going to ask Director of Transit Services, Sandy Stinko.
Because sometimes they may inadvertently write it to require paratransit, where really the student, as now a young adult, may actually be able to use.
Do fixed routes?
Yeah.
Yes, Sandy Stinko, Director of Specialized Services. Absolutely. That's what Jim Champeau is so involved in, and that's part of the whole Mobility Training Center. But we work very closely with Clark County School District, and, you know, go out and do in-service training.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask, because it doesn't always translate to the classroom. And, and so, as I'm writing an IEP, I might just be doing it one way, because that's what I always did, and there's not always someone on campus. It's more the high schools that you would be coordinating with, I would think.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Question or a motion?
Question. Percentage-wise, how much are we subsidizing the paratransit?
A lot.
I would round to 100%.
Yeah, it would. It would round to 100%.
Well, because I, you just said that our, our cost is one of 5%, but our ridership is only one of 1.5. And so we're continually getting worse in the paratransit?
Well, the ridership is increasing consistently with the cost. If you look at those numbers again, we're, we're looking at about 5% in both, in ridership and the cost of the contract for fiscal 14.
Okay. Why, this is, Chris, or Commissioner G. had a good point. We need to push hard to see if some of those nonprofits will step up the plate a little bigger, I guess. A little bigger. That's kind of weird.
And we're going to discuss that a later agenda.
We will, yeah. At, next month, we'll be coming back to you with the results of the Alternative Transit Services RFP that we did, and MJ and her staff will present to you their recommendations for partnering with additional nonprofits.
Very good. Entertain a motion on the tentative budget. Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed, and the motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Item 43 is to receive a report on the proposed evaluation criteria and procurement calendar for request for proposals, number 13-116, program administration, Club Ride Commuter Services program, and direct staff accordingly. The RTC currently has a Transportation Demand Management Program, Club Ride Commuter Services. The RTC currently has a transportation demand management program, Club Ride Commuter Services, which helps to reduce single occupancy vehicles on southern Nevada roadways. The program is currently administered by URS Corporation, and the contract term expires on September 30th, 2013. The RTC is scheduled to issue this RFP in May 2013 after staff completes an industry review process of the proposed RFP and contract documents. Staff has prepared a presentation of the proposed evaluation criteria to include the industry review process and the proposed procurement calendar. Staff seeks direction to proceed with the industry review process or take other action as appropriate. And Lydia Bilinski, our senior purchasing analyst, is going to present this to you.
Hi, good morning, Chairman and members of the board. Here to kind of review the proposed schedule of events and industry agency review process for Project 13-116, Program Administration, Transportation Demand Management Services. You got a good overview this morning from Margaret Dwyer on the Club Ride Program, so I'm not going to go through that again. As MJ mentioned, our current contract expires on September 30th, 2013. So if we can go ahead, let's start with a review of the proposed calendar. We'd like to issue the agents, the agency and industry review today, later this afternoon, with responses due on April 25th. Those would be electronic responses, so easy to respond. We'd bring back to the board on May 16th, the staff recommendations for the RFP, the structure, the evaluation criteria, taking into consideration all the comments we got from the industry and agency review. We'd issue the RFP on May 21st, 2013, followed by a pre-proposal conference on May 29th, interviews July 9th, 10th, 11th, about so, and then bring back the staff recommendations for contract award and the final contract to the August 8th board meeting for approval with commencement of services on October 1st. So we'll leave a little bit of a transition time. For the industry agency review process, staff has identified six Western Transit Agencies that administer TDM programs, so they will be sent, the industry reviewed, and asked to participate. Staff will also contact the firms that proposed on the last TDM RFP in 2007, plus we have a couple of other interested parties that have contacted us that are interested in participating in the RFP process. In addition, we'll post it on our website, so anyone out there who wants to participate can. Again, once the responses are reviewed, we'll develop our final recommendations and bring that back to the board on May 16th, with the RFP to schedule to issue on the 21st. What we did in the industry review, what it includes is a questionnaire, a simple questionnaire, includes the draft RFP document, includes the draft contract, also has what we propose as the evaluation criterion weights, and we included a couple of different exhibits, the budget worksheet, because that's important, because it's the format that NDOT requires for submission. Just to go through the criteria that we put in the industry review, we have qualifications and experience and references at 15%, staffing plan, management, organizational structure of team at 30%, work plan, budget at 25%, and transportation demand management specific knowledge and experience at 15%, and then the interview process at 15% as well. That pretty much summarizes the presentation and what we're planning to do, if anyone has any questions.
Comments or questions? We have received the report, but it also says for possible action. We have received a report, and without questions, I think you have direction, which sometimes from this board is best, without direction.
Okay, thank you.
Go do what you do.
Okay.
Thank you. Lydia?
Item 44 is to receive a report on the recommended revised procurement considerations for request for proposals number 13-053, Transit Vehicle Advertising, approved procurement considerations, and authorize staff to issue the solicitation. On February 14th, 2013, the RTC approved procurement considerations for the Transit Vehicle Advertising Solicitation and authorized staff to issue the solicitation for industry review. Based on those comments received during that industry review process, this agenda item will provide a summary presentation of the recommended revised solicitation considerations proposed by staff. Staff seeks approval on the evaluation process, evaluation criterion weights, a recommended selection of the most qualified proposer will be submitted to the RTC Board of Commissioners for approval at a future board meeting. Carl Scarborough, our manager of Transit amenities, is going to present to you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Couple, I'm Carl Scarborough, manager of Transit amenities and advertising. Couple of months ago, we came to you with a great plan to solicit potential partners for our Transit Vehicle Advertising Program. The first step of that plan was an industry review where we met with a number of companies that would be bidders on this, and we got some great feedback, and we realized that we could make our great plan even better. So we have, are coming back and asking you for authorization to change the criteria and do a two-step procurement process. Step one is going to be largely based on looking at experience and references, interviews with the potential proponents, looking at their operations and management plan, their management structure and key personnel, their employee training plan, and most importantly, looking at their fiscal strength, making sure that whoever we bring forward to you is a proven operator, and our finance department through that one will actually look at three years of audited financial reports. The top proposers and the most qualified out of that staff will go to step two, which is based 50% on price, looking at the minimum annual guarantee they're proposing and the revenue CR percentage, also looking at innovation, what new ideas do they bring to the table for generating advertising revenue, looking at their staffing and personnel plan, again looking at experiences and references to the extent that we're actually going to contact them and interview the people they've done business with in the past, looking at their transition and startup plan. So this two-step process would have us issue an RFP on April 11th with a, sorry, April 25th on the issue, come back to the board with the list of proposers in August for board approval, and then approval of the contract in September.
I'd be happy to answer any questions. Comments or questions from the board? Commissioner June Kiliani?
Thank you. I like the staff training component. We don't always have that, I think, sometimes, so that might be something even in the paratransit concert. Thank you. That contract, we might want to look at as well, because that's very key in certain areas, sometimes, not so much in others, but I think that, that's a very valuable. So the two-step, you still feel will get you something in a reasonable timeframe? All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Grand Central Parkway, I haven't been there in years.
Very good. We received the report, but I think we need a direction on this.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, staff does recommend approval.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
The last item, 45, is to receive a report on the procurement considerations for request for proposals number 13-036, Americans with Disabilities Act, Paratransit Services, approved procurement considerations and authorized staff to issue the solicitation for industry review. The RTC has a contract with First Transit for paratransit services. This contract is scheduled to expire on June 30th, 2014. This agenda item will provide a summary presentation of the ADA Paratransit Services Solicitation Considerations proposed by staff. Staff seeks approval on the structure, including a proposed industry review, contract term, solicitation process, evaluation criterion weights, and the structure of the evaluation team. A recommended selection of the most qualified proposer will be submitted to the RTC Board of Commissioners for approval at a future board meeting. Sharon Hout, our purchasing manager, will present to you.
Good morning, Commissioners. As MJ said, I'm Sharon Hout, manager of purchasing and contracts for the RTC. This report is regarding the procurement considerations for the solicitation of the contract for ADA paratransit service, and staff intends to conduct an industry review with prospective proposers to get feedback on the draft RFP. The first thing that, next? Never mind. Okay, the first thing that we want to propose to you is the contract term, and our recommendation is based on service contracting trends, results from an industry survey of other transit agencies that was conducted by RTC staff. We are recommending a five-year base term with one three-year option term, and after that, one two-year option term for up to a total of 10 years. The next proposed recommendation is, once again, a two-step evaluation. Step one would be, as you just heard on the transit advertising, step one would be qualifications only. There would be no price consideration in step one. Step two, for those who make it, to the step two, part of the evaluation, would be based on both qualifications and pricing, as you'll see in the next few slides. This recommendation is based on the, the success of the two-step evaluation process experienced on the fixed route solicitation, which first evaluates the proposers on technical qualifications only. Then only those most qualified proposers will advance to the second step of the evaluation, which includes the price. And speaking of the evaluation criteria, you have step one, which we are proposing a management approach, key personnel plan and staffing plan of 40%, work plan and startup of 35%, and experience of 25%. Then those most qualified proposers would move on to step two, of which price would be 50%, 50% and technical qualifications would be 50%. The technical qualifications would include a customer service approach, which includes a local management situational tabletop exercise, and I neglected to mention that in step one, the management approach, key personnel staff and staffing plan would also include an interview, interview with the proposed key personnel and corporate staff. These recommendations are based on past procurement options for weights of technical and price factors, and once again, the two-step evaluation process allows us to identify only the A-list proposers, which move on where price can be a more significant factor in the second step. Next, we're proposing a valuation team based of RTC staff and consultants. This is a cross-functional team, and once again, this recommendation was based on the success that we had in the fixed, the last fixed route solicitation as well. Lastly, we have the timeline that we're proposing. If approval of the proposed procurement considerations and schedule of events is approved today, then we will go through the industry review and the RTC board presentation of industry review, staff recommendations, public hearing, RTC board approval of final structure of RFP will be August 8th of this year. We will go ahead and issue the final RFP on September 10th of this year, and then in February 13th of 2014, we'll bring you back the approval of the recommendation and the contract for your approval. That will give us enough transition time to, which is, which may be required for the June 29th, 2014 startup. So today, we're seeking approval for the contract terms, the two-step solicitation evaluation process, the evaluation criteria and weights, and also the cross-functional evaluation team. And with that, I can answer any of your questions.
Comments or questions from the board? Commissioner June Kiliani?
Thank you. In looking at percentages, where is training in that component of the slice?
Staff training is...
Technical, or is that considered in the?
Okay, I'm getting Sandy. I'm going to ask Sandy Stanko, come up here, because I don't remember, but I know that it's in there.
Yes, it's part of step one, and it's part of the plans, so 35%.
35%.
That's correct.
So that may be why you have a different percentage, because we were just looking at that part. Then that makes better sense, because otherwise, I was going to say you probably should flip those, because that's far more important in my mind.
Yes.
And I know the drivers have actually reached out, some of the teams, there's even, maybe we should create some kind of a training program that's ongoing, because you have not only people with physical disabilities, but you have mental disabilities as well, and having folks work through that would be very, very helpful. Then on the 60, or the 50/50, now, we did more weighted of funding on the fixed route, this one we're doing dead even, and is that because of the technical, more technical nature of the paratransit in the long run?
Yes, that was our...
And should it be a 60/40 rather than, and I don't know. I don't truly know.
I think, again, using the concept of making sure that the only folks that move forward to step two...
Okay, because you have the two steps, and you weed out those that wouldn't even have that, so you feel more comfortable than with the 50/50?
And the customer service part of step two would also include the training, definitely dealing with the unique population, yes.
Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, staff recommends approval.
Entertain a motion. Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. That brings us to our last item, which is item 46, which is to conduct your last citizens' participation.
This time is set aside for those wishing to speak to the board. If you want to speak to the board, step forward, state your name for the record.
Mr. Chair, I have one quick question, and I apologize, I was going to ask this on the consent. What is a ruggedized tablet? I had it in my notes on item 31, and I neglected to ask what a ruggedized tablet is.
Mr. Chairman, through you, it is a super-duper, heavy-duty laptop.
Okay.
We'll be more than happy to show it to you when you get in.
The reason for going to that, that type of mobile device...
Yes, super-duper.
It's actually a cost savings to us versus the traditional investment in a, in hardwired equipment.
We do have one card, Patricia Anderson, trying to double dip this morning, but you are very welcome to address the board.
Well, good morning again. I just wanted to let you know that I feel very personally that you need to secure the drivers at this point, a letter in writing to secure their jobs. We have two companies that are coming in. We don't know that, how they're going to do. They might turn around and say, look, we're done, and what's going to happen to these drivers? What's going to happen to the city? We have to, I feel that we need to, I've been doing a lot of thinking about this, and I feel that we need to secure these drivers. You have drivers which are, as I said before, fantastic. As I say, I had to, a couple of times, a driver was frustrated, pressure would not get on the, on the bus, and I went for the defense of the bus driver. This happened a couple of weeks ago. You know, and they feel, another thing, a lot about the, the bus, the bus pass, they'll swipe the bus pass and they say it's good. The bus drivers say it's not good. How is it going to be good? If it said it's valid, it's invalid. You cannot make a bus driver, I mean, if a bus driver, if a pass is gone, it's done. And these people want to get on here, and they, they want to turn around again, and they want to do a free ride. They, I see them with their, underneath their coats last week, and I didn't say anything because I know you all told me not to get involved, and I'm trying not to get involved. I've been doing that part. There's beers under their coats. I've seen it. I mean, I, I mean, it's not, you know, and they're carrying on, they're eating, I mean, they have chips and they, like it's a party. We need to stop all of this. I mean, if this is what's going on, and as I say, I don't want to go to the drivers out of time because I know they're trying to stay on route. But again, another thing is this, this recovery time. They, what you need to do at this point is need, not to forget about the recovery time, time points. These drivers have been driving 10 or 12 or 13 hours. They need... They need to, if they want to stop at a stop, they need to get out, stretch their legs, four or five minutes, whatever. They should to forget time points. We should not have any more time points. That's my suggestion. Because as I say, they're fantastic. And I think that we need to just, oh, I don't know. And my thing is, another thing we need to do is just try to let things, I know you've already made your decision, but I don't think it's going to work. This is my personal opinion, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the board? I do want to acknowledge that today, we moved forward hiring counsel for the RTC. I think I'd be remiss if I did not thank Chris Figgins and Mary Miller for stepping in over the last few months.
They're still going to be involved. They're still going to be consulted regularly.
They will be. Chris will be with us for flood. But we certainly thank Mary for going above and beyond over the last few months. Greatly appreciated. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.